Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's special call. Muskogee City Council, July 15, 2024. Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Cale. Deputy Mayor Derek Reed. Jamie Stout. Tracy Hous. Shirley Hilton Flannery. CB Abel. Melody Cranford. Dan Hall. Tom Martindale.
Okay, next we'll have the invocation. Dear Lord, these are trying times for our country. I pray that you guide us to be respectful of one another, whatever our politics are or background is. Thank you for placing your hand on the Republican candidate for president. I can't imagine the distress and angst this country would have gone through if he would have perished at the hand of an assassin. In Jesus' name, amen. Okay, attention. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number one, please.
Consider approval of special call minutes of July 8, 2024, or take other necessary action.
Move for approval?
Roll call.
Tom Martindale. Dan Hall. Melody Cranford. CB Abel. Jamie Stout. Deputy Mayor Derek Reed. Mayor Patrick Cale.
Motion passes. Number two, please.
Consider and take action with respect to ordinance number 4238A, an ordinance of the city of Muskogee repealing ordinance number 4234A adopted May 20, 2024, with the purpose being to promote voter education and future support of citizens investing in our community and to postpone the city of Muskogee election currently scheduled to be held on August 27, 2024, related to three general obligation bond propositions, declaring an emergency, and containing other provisions related thereto.
Deputy Mayor?
You can go ahead.
Almost everyone I've talked to is in favor of investing in Muskogee and like the projects put forward. But I feel like we could use a few more months to consider the issues. I'm excited about the opportunities for Muskogee through this measure, but I want everyone, all the people of Muskogee, to be informed as much as possible when they go vote. I'm grateful for the effort so far in helping spread the word, but I believe we can do more. That's why I called the meeting for the council to consider postponing the vote for a period of time. Would anybody think somebody?
Move for approval?
Yeah. First and second. Does anybody have anything to say, or we're ready for folks from the community?
Let's go ahead and hear from public comments.
Okay. Mr. Ron Dean, please.
Thank you for an opportunity to address you all tonight, and thank you, council, mayor, for considering this and for taking a look at it. The projects that have been identified, I think there is a consensus among our residents that, as there is among the council, that these are projects worth doing. They're worth looking at. There are some things that need to be done in our city that probably have needed to be done for a long time, and they're important enough to take a serious look at. But at the same time, just like any of us at our own home, we can identify things that need to be done, but we're going to do them within our financial ability to do it, and what is wise. We're not going to mortgage ourself into bankruptcy or into a situation we won't be able to get out by trying to solve one problem by creating another. And that, I think, is where the concern is from the public, and it's my concern, not that these projects are not worth doing and not worth trying to figure out a way to do them, but I don't feel like every single possibility has been looked at, researched, and identified as possible ways to fund these projects and to prioritize these projects. And speaking to the term of 25 years, I believe has got to be something that's completely off the table, or we'll be back here months from now having the same conversation that it's not, the public is not going to support it. I've not talked to one person over the last several months that feels like a 25-year bond would be anything that they would even consider. Some folks say, "I won't consider a property tax bond at all." Some have said, you know, a term of three, four, five, six, seven years, perhaps. But I've not heard anyone say that they would consider anything beyond that. But I think we need to look at it other ways. One thing, and I'll leave it with this. If there is a concerted effort from this council and a commitment to go to all of our industry, to go to our civic groups, to go to our leaders and organizations, and go to the public and say, "We want you to be part of this agenda and part of this project. We want you to sit down with us and look at everything we've identified. Now, what have you identified as needs?" And come up with that, and then let's listen to the brightest minds in our area and to the taxpayers that would be asked to fund anything and come up with ways to do that, that everyone is comfortable. We won't have to hire a PR firm to try to sell it to everyone because the public will sell it to each other. Our industry will be behind it, and they will get on board. I have no doubt we've got some industry leaders in this town that have built multi-billion-dollar companies and are very successful, that probably have some ideas that we haven't even thought about. They're probably pretty good. If they can run Fortune 500 companies, they can surely help us figure out ways to do some things better than what we can come up with ourselves. We can come up with the ideas or with the needs. Let's listen to them. Let's listen to Grandma that has scraped by for years and figured a way to feed her family. Let's listen to her as she's got her own ideas. She's probably had a harder time than some of our industry leaders at balancing the checkbook each month. Well, let's listen to her when she has concerns of how this is going to affect her, and let's find some ways to do that perhaps a little bit better. I applaud you all for considering this. I applaud you for listening to the public, and I think the public is ready to get on board with all of you and work to find a solution to make Muskogee a better place, but also do it to where we haven't mortaged something that we're not going to be able to pay for or that's going to put an undue burden on our general public and our industries. And keep in mind, we want Muskogee to grow. We've got to do things to help it grow. And I think proposing a tax that, on businesses that aren't even here, would have the adverse effect of trying to bring people here. So I thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Ron. Some of your last suggestions are exactly what we plan to do. Okay. All you need to do is just state your name. No address, just your name.
All right, Pete Caraway. I wanted to talk about, I wanted to lay the bond. I'm not sure, I think it should probably be after the election. I'm not sure what President Trump, former President Trump, what his priorities are going to be at this particular point. I know some of the things, but I don't know how fast they can be reenacted and what it's going to affect the economy. That's one reason for the delay. The other, I'm going to mention two words that I've never heard in the city council. County seat. What does that mean? The county seat functions in this town, regardless of what the city is going to do, are not going to disappear, period. That's from past experience, looking at Trootland County, Soperden, Montgomery County, in Georgia. Once you're a county seat, you have, the county seats come in, the functions of a county seat, Social Security, feds, whatever, the court system. That's not going to disappear. This town is going to be here for a long, long time yet. It's not over. But I don't think you're quite ready for prime time yet. And that, I mean, for example, we're going to have a bond for 25 years. Who's going to decide in which year we spend money for the activities that are approved for the bond? All at one time? One shot, take all? There are going to be things that come up in the future that you haven't thought of. Example of that is like some discussions between me and Pat. "Oh, I'm glad you talked to me. I didn't think of that. That thought never occurred to me." Well, things are going to happen that's unplanned and going to catch you right by the shorts that you're going to have to fund, which brings up the problem, how much money out of your current budget over these 25 years are you going to throw in addition to the bond money? In other words, that, that you're capable of funding? Are we just going to spend bond money for 25 years and go to the poker table with what we normally spend on an annual basis for routine maintenance? This building has been here for a long, long time. It didn't just start flooding in the basement. Okay, there was a city council here. What in the hell did they spend their money on? Well, we don't need to go on that. We know where some of it went, and it wasn't very nice where it went, period. So that's one reason, let's get our act together. For instance, does the city police have to be in the city hall? My opinion, the answer to that is no. How many people visit the police department? You go outside, turn around, or you drive into town, all you see is a clump of misparked police cars all around this area here. It looks like towed crap. Plus, you parked the damn cars over here at the civic center right when we have terrorists, after 9/11, coming into country trying to kill people. There was no guards placed on it. We didn't have any fences. Anybody could have booby-trapped every one of those blasted cars. You did it twice. The second time was after I informed one of your supervisors in the police department that that was a possibility. That's when you moved it to defense. These guys aren't playing around. When they get ready to kill somebody, as you saw, it's pretty damn easy. It's hard to get away with killing somebody, but it's easy to get them.
Thank you, Mr. Caraway.
Okay, can I have?
Our time's up.
Just a few more seconds?
I'm sorry, sir. The time is not to be extended by city ordinance.
But as I say, in summary, I'm not opposed to the bond.
Sir, I'm sorry, you're not allowed to speak further. The time has not been extended by council.
I'd like to know, how are we going, when are we going to build a city hall? Where are we going to build it? Who's going to occupy, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay. I guess are we ready for a roll call here?
We don't have a motion yet.
I thought we did have a motion. We do have a motion?
I'm sorry, I missed the message.
I move for approval. Second.
I got that on the minutes, but I didn't get it on the ordinance.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale. Dan Hall. Melody Cranford. CB Abel. Jamie Stout. Deputy Mayor Derek Reed. Mayor Patrick Cale.
That motion passes? A motion on declaring an emergency?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale. Dan Hall. Melody Cranford. CB Abel. Jamie Stout. Deputy Mayor Derek Reed. Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes, motion passes. Okay, item number three, please.
Consider and take action with respect to Resolution number 3001, a resolution of the city of Muskogee, repealing Resolution number 2994, adopted May 20, 2024, with the purpose being to promote voter education and the future support of citizens investing in our community and to postpone the city of Muskogee election currently scheduled to be held on August 27, 2024, related to a one-half of 1% sales tax proposition, declaring an emergency, and containing other provisions related thereto.
Okay, this item is simply pulling back the CIP that we were going to have at the same election. So we're pulling that item as well as the bond issue. Mr. Ron Dean?
Ron Dean, I agree with your premise behind doing that because I think, looking at funding all the way across, some of these projects probably could share some of that funding, and we could look at everything, and there may be ways, especially if it's considered sales tax, of partnering some of these together and rather than having two sales tax, perhaps just one sales tax that would be able to accommodate the projects that that funding would be for and put it in the same project. I think making it as simple to the public to understand is going to help with support, help with understanding, and not be confusing. If there is one sales tax already out there, and then another is being proposed for some others and piggybacking off of them, it might be confusing. But if we're looking at all of the needs of the city, all of the needs, and prioritizing them, and then looking at funding options at that same time, I think that will be easier to understand, to work up the numbers, prioritize, and present to the public. So I support that as well.
Do I have anybody?
I have a question. So when does our previous CIP come off? When does this finalize?
October, is it?
So our current sales tax expires September 30 of next year, 2025.
So we got a year?
Yes.
Okay, because I was kind of wondering how this is going to affect our infrastructure, our street projects, because I realize that our current CIP is tied into that. And it's kind of two different kinds of deals, the bond plus the CIP. And I just did not want that to come off because it's a current sales tax.
Correct.
It's not a new one.
And it will stay in effect until that time.
And I was on city council when there was $300,000 a year to do road projects in this town from previous city council. And that wouldn't even fix our potholes in half, in a quarter of our streets. Now we have over $28 million going into our street projects, and I don't want to stop that. You think y'all agree right now? This CIP fixes our streets and our infrastructure. And I'm okay with holding the bond. I just want to make sure that we don't miss out on our CIP and keep it where it's at because I've seen what happens to our streets and our infrastructure, even though it's still bad, and they're not perfect yet. But I've seen what it looked like when I was here 12 years ago, and we didn't have all that. I'm just saying, we got to really think about whether we want to do away with the CIP and stop it too. So we can vote on it however you want to, and I understand that I'm not for any new sales tax, never have been. But at the same time, I remember 12 years ago when we had $300,000 for our street projects, and now we have $28 million through different funding sources. I'm not willing to give that up. So let's just make sure when it's time that we don't give that up.
So is there any way that this portion of what we were already having in place with the bond could be adjourned without being adjourned sinetedia? We need a definitive something where it's not just that we pull it off the table, but we have, for the CIP, an estimated time that we would bring it back, as opposed to saying it's completely off the table because it was just an extension of what we already had in place, as opposed to saying doing away with it as we're restructuring something that didn't exist already.
I might suggest that early next spring we might consider it, and that would be after doing an education campaign and letting everybody know for sure exactly what we're doing and getting folks on board up front. But I'm not in favor of waiting until next September.
Me either, because we got to budget it for in July, if we got the money or not. And like I said, I had my ifs and doubts about the bond issue, but I have a significant tie to that CIP for our infrastructure needs and for what we're doing. Fight way too hard to get some streets fixed in this town and some water lines fixed in this town that it's just, I want to make sure that we don't go past the point of not getting it voted for. And we need to educate the people what we are using it for and how we plan on using it. I think there should be always checks and balances with the money. I'm not opposed to that, but I do believe that we need to make sure that our public knows that that CIP is a lifeline for your drive-on-the-streets that you've got. And I remember when they were all red, and now we got some green streets, which means where they were at. They were like green, yellow, black, and all this other stuff on how bad they were. So that is a big issue with me about the infrastructure of our city. I ran on that this time when I ran, that we got to get our infrastructure fixed. So keep in mind, as a citizen, you gripped about the streets now. We deal away with that CIP. We won't have very good streets at all then to drive on.
I think it's probably important to note that, you know, the reason we got here in the first place is that we identified that there are needs in our community. We got here because of buildings that we need to fix and want to make it clear that the actions tonight are not going to forsake anything, that the firefighters need anything, the police department need, the needs that we have in our community. This council is going to come back at some point and address those items, definitely the CIP. So, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, we put that on the record, that we will be back. If I could quote, you know, my predecessor, who told me, "Dan, number one, always put the people first." And when we saw the other day that the item came with the lawsuit, you know, that's concerning. You know, we may have to change our numbers around. We may have to reconsider some of the projects that we're doing. And so that's what drives us here tonight, to reconsider, to take this time to reconsider how we present this to the community, to reconsider how we address these needs, to take the ideas that have been presented to us over the last couple of weeks. And with that, we will come back and, you know, do our best to find a plan and a way, and avenue there, but we can address these items without, you know, driving our community into a more deeper financial hardship.
Thank you. Anybody else? Do I have a motion?
So moved. A second.
Motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale. Dan Hall. Melody Cranford. CB Abel. Jamie Stout. Deputy Mayor Derek Reed. Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Okay, next, we need to pass a declaring an emergency.
Move for approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale. Dan Hall. Melody Cranford. CB Abel. Jamie Stout. Deputy Mayor Derek Reed. Mayor Patrick Cale.
Item number two, please. Motion passes. Item number four, please.
Consider and take action with respect to ordinance number 4239A, an ordinance of the city of Muskogee, repealing ordinance number 4235A, adopted May 20, 2024, related to the levy of a one-half of 1% sales tax, declaring an emergency, and containing other provisions related thereto.
Okay, we have Lisa Hickman that wants to speak on item number four subject.
All righty, thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight. I am Lisa Hickman. I am Lisa Hickman. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I appreciate your time. Today, I'd like to bring to your attention some problems that I see within the half-cent sales tax that we've decided to try to approve. Now, at one time, the Port of Muskogee was rebranded as Port Muskogee, which is owned by, we don't know, who does own this portion of the levy that we're asking to get this half a sales tax for. I also noticed while doing some research, it looks like we had a $58 million investment in infrastructure improvements back in 2022. I don't see the need for a tax increase when we had $58 million to invest to get any corrections done. What part of the levy are they referring to when they're saying that they're wanting to get this half-cent increase? What part of the levy are they referring to getting corrected for the infrastructure that needs to be done? We look at the documentation here when it shows that there was $58 million in 2022 to correct the infrastructure. Does it still cost more money to get another sales tax in order to increase the taxpayer's portion to get this levy fixed? Can anybody clarify what portion of the levy that they're referring to? And can anybody clarify who owns the Port of Muskogee, better known as the Port Muskogee? Can anybody clarify that?
With the council, if the council would like, I can address those questions briefly.
Thank you.
Thank you, manager.
Excuse me, the Port Authority is a city-county. Port Authority is a state agency that is a trust through the state of Oklahoma. So that is who operates the Port Muskogee. The $58 million worth of infrastructure I'm not familiar with. I think that may have been a federal appropriation for port infrastructure. You'd have probably asked the port about what that is related to.
It was in 2022.
But it was not granted to the city, and it was not through us, so I can't speak clearly on what that $58 million was for. And lastly, you ask where this berm would be, and it's basically around the property from where the turnpike goes over the river to south of the port terminal proper. That's my understanding, that Port is the lead agency on that, but that's my understanding as well.
Okay, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that a lot of what we are seeing here with these current agenda items for the last couple of weeks is an issue with confabulation. We have so many things going at the same time that they're all being, again, conjoined. And this information may be accurate, but it is not pertaining to what we are doing. And the more information that comes in from citizens that we don't address separately and de-aggregate all of these things, everything is becoming compiled and a part of a bond.